I'm going to note for the record that we are deferring the item on Pearl for a Patriot Book Session and our agenda tonight will cover promoting classes, scheduling, registration of courses, TREC programs, and a discussion of our budget. So moving into the first item, Matt, take us away.
Yep. So there's, at the board table, we've talked different times and I guess maybe back this up in the program of studies we presented to you, several different courses that would be offered for the 1920's school year, but two of, I think, attention to the board were Ethnic Studies and the start of an Ag Ed program. And so with us here this afternoon, we have Mr. Bacon from City High, Mr. Kitty from Liberty, Dr. Schultz from West, and then Mr. Carey, also one of the guidance counselors at City High, has joined us. I don't think I missed him. Bales, obviously Brady's very involved with the leadership team at Liberty High and across the district with the Teachers Association, so he has some good background now on this too. But I thought maybe the best thing would be just to give those gentlemen a chance to explain to you kind of what that registration process looks like in their building, what they've done to kind of advertise and market not only these two new classes, but kind of the general procedure for what happens when we do have a new class. And we've also talked about that delicate balance between other elective areas too and making sure that they also have their opportunity to highlight what they're able to offer to students. And I would say just one thing of note, I'm sure all three of the guys will talk about how their timelines have been bumped here a little bit with the weather as well. And so I know that some of those processes probably haven't worked as ideal as they'd like in January, just from the weather and having to delay some dates. And so that'll delay our ability to get in course requests for kids and be able to report back to them what those numbers actually look like. But with that, I don't know, Dan, are you okay? Kind of starting and jumping in?
Sure. Thanks. Let's see, Will, let's see. We do a variety of different things in the registration process and then also speak specifically to highlighting the new offerings. In general, with the process, there are small group, the counselors lead small group meetings. They go by grade level and we just methodically work our way through using a series of different small group meetings to the point that every student gets a chance to meet with a counselor. And they talk about the upcoming registration process, they talk about options and highlights for each grade level. And then they have sort of a sheet of talking points or highlights and that would include anything that's new. So in a small group setting, the counselors are able to preview everything that's a new option and can give special attention to those things. And so everyone is hearing that message. We also did something special. At Matt's recommendation, we reached out to West Branch High School, who has a successful Ag program and MFA chapter, invited them to come out to City High during one of our advisory periods. And so for a couple of weeks leading up to that, we used our announcement system to advertise that that opportunity was going to be available to students. We said that that was an opportunity each day to plug the fact that there was this new course offering that was coming next year and that to help students learn about what this is all about, they could attend this informational session. And so we had, I think, about 10 members of the West Branch High School's Ag program, as well as one of their teachers, come out during advisory and they led a really nice informational session for teachers. And so we've had a pretty extensive announcement period to give special attention to the fact that that class is happening. In terms of Ethnic Studies, I would say we've used announcements to include that as well. Leading up to the grade level meetings, starting with students about the registration process, when we would say, highlights, I would say something like, "Highlights include information about our new courses, including Ag Education and Ethnic Studies." So those are some of the steps that we've taken. Mr. Carey, I'll look at you now and see if I, how I summarize that or if there's anything you'd want to add.
You know, the only thing that I would add is, so we do that first informational meeting, then we do a follow-up meeting. Our seniors, we actually do, to be seniors or juniors, we have one-on-one. So we have the opportunity to, we'll start off the meeting by saying, "Hey, what are you thinking about after?" And then try to, because there's so many offerings and we know the curriculum inside and out, they know pretty well by the time they go down to the meetings, but we can encourage students who have specific interests that, you know, maybe they don't see the connection between a unique program, either the Kirkwood Regional Center or something like one of our delectives, so we can help them see that. So our seniors to be, or juniors now, we're one-on-one with them. So we'll be doing that over the next several weeks. And then our freshman, incoming freshman, incoming sophomore, incoming junior group, we need small meetings. And again, we can, we can do a little bit of that, but we see them all in 25 and 45 minutes, so there's not a lot of time there. The final thing is that we run parent meetings at the parent teacher conferences and make sure that the parents that want to come in, you know, unfortunately, we don't, we don't have gigantic crowds, but we offer informational meetings and they get the same PowerPoint that kids are getting. And an opportunity for question and answer afterwards. Our biggest session is always our incoming eighth, or ninth graders, with the parents coming in for the study. Those are the only two things I would add in addition.
Now, with the parents, I understand that they don't, they might more and more in elementary current as a materialator, as well. Is there any type of email that's sent out to parents that's sort of part of a notification on new course offerings or anything like that?
Mrs. Holt sends out weekly, I don't know if it's weekly, but very, very frequent email with updates from the parents' office. So those have a lot of information in them and included in their asking information requests as well. Go ahead, Scott.
Not too different, I would say. We, we did our registration a little differently. Some of the basics about graduation requirements and things like that, we did in what we would call a flipped classroom, so that was all in an online presentation. And during one of our advisory times, we called it Liberty Time, the kids were expected to go on there and get that information from their computer. And that way, when counselors went to classrooms to meet with kids, they could have more individual conversations as opposed to, you know, tell them they need 310 graduation credits and that kind of stuff. I physically went to one of those meetings so that I could verify, and there was time spent on Ethnic Studies, a slide on part of their PowerPoint, and a separate slide on our Ag program as well. And so those were featured as those individual conversations with classes. Our counselors went to every single English classroom, nine through 12, so, or nine through 11, we wouldn't do it with our 12th graders, of course. So the kids got it that way. We've not been to our junior highs yet because we've been canceled twice, and so now we're going to go next Wednesday and we'll provide that information to them again. We had a parent night two Wednesdays ago, we were supposed to have it tomorrow night, and now we'll have one next Wednesday night, and so we'll get that information out to those families as well. We keep trying, we keep pushing that back. The Ag and the Ethnic Studies course were specifically highlighted in my S'more newsletter, it had its own little feature, and so I did that early on. And then the other piece that I heard kind of in this question is, our counselors sent out all the materials to families in a separate email than, than from my S'more in terms of courses, studies, books, here's the PowerPoints that kids have been seeing, and so all that went as well. So we've been trying to kind of blast it as much as we can, but we've got some work to do because of the weather still.
Guess it's my turn. Pretty much a lot of the commonality here. One thing I would highlight is, we did put the Ethnic Studies and the Ag program in our schedule. Back, it's back to December, you know, as we're in the prime of the month for this. I would also say that we brought our students over to meet the Secretary of Ag Culture, so they could talk about that experience a little bit and just sort of get their word going. The other thing is just to recognize that, you know, the underclassmen tend to fill up their schedules, upperclassmen don't. And so we've been really pushing the upperclassmen to be a little more aggressive with their scheduling, and they're the ones who are looking, you know, the target for the Ag and the Ethnic Studies programs to get the numbers to the five of them. So like the other schools, you know, we are meeting with the students, various, well, because it's part of actually, part of the process, but really came out of our, you know, many schools as we look at and try to make sure we're raising rigor for all of our students. But it does provide that platform to talk about all of these at their table. So, you know, the counselors have a chart, you know, with what they, you know, with their preference, and they can use that as talking points, and of course, the two new classes are part of the talking points. In addition, you know, we did our, it was just, it was interesting to Liberty Time because I think a lot of my students think that our intervention time is Liberty Time. [laughter] So I'm wondering how, you know, maybe that name's seen over somewhere. But we used that time as well for scheduling, and so I did a meditation with Paul Reibach, and we sent out to everybody. We spent, you know, a good, you know, section of that on the Ag and Ethnic Studies. So it was a great part of, as we kicked off this registration time. So I guess that's what I would add for West Side.
So question, is this your standard process when a course is introduced, what you just described?
Pretty much the difference with this, the Ag program, is it's not in a, you know, and so when that was sort of the difference, and really, I think, so you can really kind of fit the same, you know, a little bit. I mean, you know, in my case, you know, the teacher that, you know, has helped develop at Mary Lynn Nash is a yellow teacher, so she's not a volunteer. And so ordinarily, during this time, we have, the weather has kind of knocked this out of the ballpark too. But as you're going to your science class, you learn about the science offerings during the registration week. And then, you know, and that has been a little bit of a disparity in the Ag program because there's no department champion yet, right?
No, there's no channel for it, yeah.
Right. So that's the difference.
Got it. So you have to do these other things, or condition or something?
Right. Sort of make up for that, you know, the lack of exposure that you have and just your ordinary sources.
Are they officially, isn't the Ethnic Studies getting a social studies elective credit?
Yeah.
Is, what's the Ag, you're getting a science, or is it just a standalone?
Career tech.
Yeah, so the career tech. Career tech elective, yeah.
But there are schools that you can get a biology.
Yeah, depending on how we end up building out course offerings, there may be some of the courses that would also, you know, that we could align up with biology or science elective credit potentially, so, but with the intro course, it's mostly what you consider an elective credit form. But yeah, I think with Greg's point, you know, just, a lot of times when we start a new course, there's kind of a champion in-house for it, right? Or somebody at least to go to and answer the questions. And so I think that's why we've done some extra work on the newsletter, on the communication end, because we're not necessarily that person to go to. And so we wanted to make sure people were aware of the Ag offering. The Ethnic Study one's been a little bit different, but it hasn't currently lived anywhere either. And so, you know, at least there's been some people that can answer that question, and it's had some also community attention, obviously surrounding it, the kids are already asking about it and asking for it.
And one question I had is, you know, with, with the snow times and the cold weather that we canceled school, has that slid, when is your deadline for planning and schedules?
Yeah, I mean, we were going to be done this week.
How was your schedule?
We were, we're already, we're moving it back a whole week, so I think it'll be a big push.
Okay.
You know, and you got to know that's where we, like, we tried to hit 80% by, say, week of Friday, and then you spend another two and a half, three weeks getting the other 20%.
Correct. Now, and, and one thing we found out with the Ethnic Studies course is that after they found out it wasn't there, we had a lot of people that have a microphone coming up and saying, "Well, I would have taken that course by now." After students set their schedules, and who knows after spring and that, is there any way that a student can change it past that? What's the mechanism there?
I mean, I imagine we all can do something a little different, but we, the students actually go online and put their preferences and what they, what they want. And then they go up with the counselor to make sure that those are, but the big thing is they also get to see the paper. And on the paper is where you have your alternates. And so that's when the, you know, the counselor's like, "This class doesn't make," and there are classes that don't make, you know, sometimes. And so then they'll look and say, "Okay, what's next?" Or the student who signed up for it, it gets slotted into a class period that just doesn't work in their schedule.
Right.
For a reason. That's one of the challenges, I think, we have classes that might have one section or even two sections only, you put it into a master schedule, if it's second period and fifth period, you're instantly, if you had 20 kids sign up for it, you're probably losing 30 to 40% of students such a scheduling complex. And then, I mean, there's that whole negotiations process that takes place. So if, everyone wants their master schedule, teacher staff measures, but it's usually May, June.
Right. And like, well, we finalize it in June.
June. Is when it's final. And then the kids will come back in August and they'll start bargaining for it, you know, but.
But it will be slowed down tremendously just based on the conversation you're going to have at the end of the work session. I mean, that's going to be the reality for us because staffing is going to be a difficult puzzle for us to solve, so.
Absolutely.
These guys will want to build their master schedule, and I'll tell them they can't, you know, because they won't know their staffing number, you know, as we'll continue to work through that process. And hopefully we'll be able to give them some of those answers, but, you know, the more solid staffing is and they know what they count on, the quicker they can go into master scheduling. And so some of that's going to be a continually moving target for us this spring to get to.
And that was, my question was going to be about, I don't know, if it's in the budget or this part, but, I mean, we're going to have to start looking at some things, and is there going to be a number that's going to be, this course is going to be offered, if we have next number, or if it's under that?
I think the first thing we'll do is complete the course request process. So kids go through, from the program of studies, submit those, those course requests, and then what we'll have to do internally is, is to look and say, "Okay, what do we have the staffing to offer? You know, what are the courses we have low request numbers on?" And like Brady said, I mean, sometimes our most difficult ones to offer in that scenario are the ones that only have one or two sections, and are those the things that, you know, we need to move to the side? Do you have the staffing and the right certification of the folks still in your building to be able to teach it? You know, what kind of FTE do we need to consider across the three high schools to do that? So some of those things, that'll be kind of the order it happens in, but the first thing is to get these requests in.
And we looked at these earlier, and I think one of the things that's important to keep in mind is when we go through that, we also have to think about offer and teach. So there's some things that the Department of Ed requires us to have in our course catalog, and so you might have a few of those classes that live down there in that small tail. So we'll get the registration, and then once we have those in, we can sit down and look at them and better understand what the ramifications are. You know, one of the other things that Matt and I have talked about is, there are times when you go through and you fill out a staff member's schedule and you've now got 0.8 of their schedule occupied, and we've got two tenths that's still in their contract, and that might align with one of those classes that they were otherwise assigned to teach, which now wound up being small, while we may wind up offering that class then, so that person's hold on is part of that process. So part of it's getting all the registration numbers in, taking a look at those. Once we understand where those are at, then we can start making some of those other dominoes to go.
But when you're in a, I would just say, when you're in a, this is in a zero-sum game situation, the things that we'll see later on in this work session. And so that does change the dynamic, you know. So in a zero-sum game, you're going, "Okay, if we ran these two that are new, something else is going to take a hit." But when you're not going to, it's going to be a challenge from the things you already offer, that does, I just think the board has to take that into consideration. It's going to create a very profound challenge.
Right. And to that end, on the Ethnic Studies, I know earlier on, we were, we were looking at bringing in instructor in for that course. Is that still the goal? We're going to be using staff, so, so that's a type of a thing, like you're talking, you, it may just be a small section of what that, that teacher does that way with the Ethnic Studies. And with the Ag education, like we've said, the challenge is we don't have anybody to help promote it. They do offer dual citizenship for, not dual citizenship, dual certification for, for those instructors. So, you know, if you do have, and, and the challenge is going to be at three schools with one instructor, so there's a lot of challenge with this program. And, but they do also would have the ability to teach a, a science or a biology, biology that way. So it, you know, like we're, we're talking, it may be 80% one, 20% the other to make the FTE, that type of a thing. But, and, and with that one too, it's unique because it's year-round curriculum.
Yeah. One of your alternative schools, they have to be 1.0 FTE, I think, with travel time.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, in the future, that would be absolutely, you could do it, but if you were running it, if, just thinking through the contract, if you were running it, the same person doing three different work sites with their travel time, that would be their sole assignment.
Yeah, they'll teach one section at all three.
Yeah, and then travel times, so they teach three of them.
So I feel that we're very naturally pivoting to budget conversation. Is there anything else on the promotion and registration that we want to make sure we get out of the table as context?
The only thing I would say, dude, there is a lot of, I mean, it's a, it's hard to capture, just in this brief amount of time, how much work goes into it on the part of the counselors, administrators, and the teachers. I mean, it's a full week of conversations with students, and typically we'd have our conferences during the middle of it, and I knew my winter time conferences with families were going to be dominated by maybe a fourth of the file they're doing right now, but then three quarters of what should they do next year? And so that's, you know, our schedule's a little bit off just because of the weather, but there is, it's a considerable amount, and students and families are quite savvy in the decisions that they make, so it is really hard to pin down why they're doing one thing in particular or not the other thing that we think they might. There's a whole host of factors that go into that, I'm sure. So just, I just want to say, you know, it's a, it's a pretty extensive process, for sure.
From the parent's side of it, I'll put that hat on, you know, as a registering junior, but to me, it feels so rushed. And part of that's because my kid doesn't want me to be a part of it anymore, right? So, I mean, my sheet, my sheet, I got to turn it in tomorrow, right? It kind of plays out that way, no matter how much I pester him to get it in. But, and I know, as you're saying, it's how much work it is, and you're starting at the end, like, building their master schedule and trying to hit all these deadlines leading up to it, so you can do that.
Yeah.
But from the parents', it's like, "Oh my God, I, I just got the list and now I got to get it in."
Yeah.
It feels very fast for me.
Yeah.
I never, you know, at the junior high level, you have very few options as to what you can do, so I never felt that rush there, but because, maybe that's it, there's so much at the high school level, particularly once you get to, you know, upperclassmen.
Yeah.
There's so many things out there, and I don't feel like, as the parent, I have the time to digest it. Meanwhile, my kid said, "No, this is one of my, oh yeah, he's just done."
No, we gave.
He probably filled it out online before you even told you, Sean.
Yeah, probably.
But sure.
To Phil's point, you, there's no buyer's remorse on that you could change that at any time with the conversation and.
Yeah, I don't know. I think the, I think that's where conferences, not having them, at least at a couple of the schools, I think a lot of that conversation with family members or, or parents guardians happens with teachers. Nobody's sitting down and saying, "Yeah."
And we have been more aggressive in our timeline with the EOS work. That has bumped our timeline up, you know, into that January timeframe with doing the student surveys in the fall and then coming back with EOS, trying to get the course requests for potential AP students so that we have some time to follow up with them in the spring for that same reason you're talking about, Phil, about if a student wants to change their mind or amend their course requests, we're able to do that. So, you know, to your point about that, it is bumped up in earlier into the school year a little bit.
But it's a lot, I mean, Tom and his colleagues, that's a good shout out, he's here, up here on the, I think, on the Weather Day, but they do fantastic job with the city and all the counselors as well.
I would just throw, not from the parents' side of things, I know, they're going to give emails here, like, "When did it become our job to promote classes? Like, why is that a thing?" Right? And it came, it is a thing, right? I know it was very, it was very real when we had all those students marching up front and had for two years begged for a class, and then they thought they were going to have it, and then for many reasons, it didn't happen. Right? And it was, it was very tangible feel at that moment that we failed and we needed to do a better job of it. And I think it's not so much promoting it and trying to sell it to, you know, to kids, but I, I, a lot of, I think the failure was around the timing and the effective communication, both ahead of the class and then after it was decided it wasn't happening, like, all of that was not done well. And so I think regardless of how many kids you get in class, because at some point, we're going to have classes, there's not going to have enough kids to be in the class, whether it's these new ones or something else, somewhere there's going to be one that's not going to happen. I think effectively communicating with enough time to the students that, "Here's what's going to happen now, and here's why, and here are your options," I think we need to do a better job of that. Because that very specific instance, year and a half ago, Ethnic Studies did not go well. And I think that's what we learned.
That, that's, the lesson learned from that one was that it needs to be in what they just described, which is our regular cycle, so that teachers in the classroom are talking about it, counselors are talking about it, it's coming in the newsletters, it's in the program of studies, so that there are multiple touchpoints to it. We learned the lesson of doing things off-cycle doesn't work.
Yeah. One of the many reasons that that's faltered. And I think that's why, I think we were starting to go, we started going down that route with the Ag offering, and I think we kind of pulled it back to make sure that we did go through the process a little more fully and get the curriculum set and things like that, so we would have a better chance of getting off on the right foot for the get-go. So I guess we'll see how many kids sign up and what we think.
So should we pivot to budget? I know the TREC was the next Ag on the agenda, but this, but budget feels like the next natural conversation.
I think TREC's a pretty short conversation, if you just want to.
Sure. Yeah. I think we just wanted to update you guys on kind of what we're doing internally a little bit as we look at TREC programs, and more importantly, I think the students served at TREC, we have anywhere from about 25 or even 20 to 30 students served at the Theodore Roosevelt Education Center throughout the year. And what we're really trying to do is just go back to a least restrictive environment philosophy with all students there, not only the IP students, but the Gen Ed students that are served there as well. And considering our home campuses, considering Tate Alternative High School, and trying to look at what options we have to continue to deliver on a high level of service to those students. And so internally, we've talked with the TREC administrator, John Nettie, Lisa Glenn from the Special Education Department, Anne Browning. We've had some updates to our high school principals, they'll continue to have some more updates here as we go through the spring, but really trying to look at what is that least restrictive environment we can continue to serve those students in? Is that a standalone program? Is that a program relocated to either a comprehensive campus or to an alternative campus? I think those are all options for us to consider as we look at those TREC programs. So I know there's been some questions, there's been newspaper articles written about it. I've been over to talk to the staff at TREC a couple times, and I think we just wanted you in the loop for the ability to ask any questions you might have about that.
Now, the 25 students you're saying that are at TREC, are they Phoenix students?
No, the Phoenix program is at Tate.
Okay. So the students that you're, you're saying.
This would be their, their day program. So the students that are served at TREC, they go there for their, for their school day. The Phoenix program would be students coming in to try to make up courses.
Oh, could be during the day, but it's at night. But some of that 25 could be students that are serving out of suspension there and getting caught up in their class studies, correct? Or am I?
We, we do have a long-term suspension program, or even some shorter-term suspensions that if a student is suspended and is deemed to, you know, we want them on, in school, not at home by themselves, but maybe not on their home campus, that they would go serve out their suspension there at TREC for a period of time. Really, the 20 to 30 students I'm talking about are the students that go there for an extended period of time.
All right.
And that could be a long-term suspension scenario. We don't expel students, so.
Right.
If we've had a student commit a serious offense in one of the home schools and we come to a voluntary agreement with that student, they may finish their school year, a full academic year there, or something along those lines.
Right. And to that end, you know, the, the students at Tate are, have, have not, you know, that's our alternative, they, they didn't fit in the, the bigger model, taking the students from TREC and putting them at Tate, isn't that, are we going to have some issues there with that? Just my conversations over there with the staff at TREC, when I visited, they, they liked the fact it's kind of unique, it's off by itself, the students are there and they're not in with the, you know, another larger group. I'm just, you know, if you can talk to.
Yeah, I think the one thing we have to remember is that all of those students were in our home buildings at one time first, right?
Right.
So they've all been on a, one of our home campuses and we've all, you know, been able to serve them on some level before. If a student ended up at Tate or TREC, you know, there's been lack of success for one reason or another, maybe it was behavioral issues that got in their way, maybe it was lack of academic success and credit failure, and then those accumulated on them and we served them at Tate, you know, to, to try to recover credits and do that. And so there's, there's a variety of reasons those students are at TREC, it's, it's a small number of students. I think there's some abilities for us in a standalone program to put some things in place for them to help them be successful, that we would be ignorant not to consider about how do we have to replicate those things to help them be successful in a new environment. And so if that's a direction we're going to move, that's some of the collaboration that has to happen for us internally, for each of our administrators to be talking through, is about what has helped those students be successful at TREC, because we have some great success stories coming out of there, right? I mean, we have a high service delivery model there that has, parents have reported that are being very successful, but there's also some concerns we have about being able to offer a holistic program, in a sense. And when we have special ed dollars going into that building and we have Gen Ed dollars, we have to be very careful about how we're blending those programs, and we haven't always got that right, and I think that's something we need to pay special attention to. And then from just an economy of what we can offer to those students, they all deserve a highly qualified teacher in every subject area. And where we're trying to do that in a 25 to 30 student school versus whether it's a 150 student school like Tate, or in our large high schools at 1,500 students, you know, there's some economies of skill we can't create there at TREC, which I think that's some areas we're looking to improve, but then also we don't want to take away the supports that have helped those students be successful. So that's the balancing act we're trying to work through and interplay right now, and we hope we'll come out with a good, good model to present back to you.
And, and Tate is the regional alternative.
Yes.
High school. And I, I remember the last time we were there and had a, had a ed committee or whatever it was, there was a waiting list to get in. Would these students coming over, is that going to make the waiting list longer, or is, you know, is there space for this plus the original goal of what Tate is supposed to do?
Well, so if we consider that some of the students at TREC have IDPs, the first thing we need to do is deliver on what's stated in their IDP. And so whether or not we talk waiting list or not, we have an obligation for those students to meet whatever statement in their plan. And then we answer the question of where that best happens. And so no matter what enrollments look like in those areas, we have an obligation to say, this is what the team decided you need, this is how we can deliver on that service, and then we answer the where question about where that is. And so that's where, if it's TREC, if it's Tate, if it's West High School, City High School, we determine that after the fact. I think your point about, you know, we've continued to operate in alternative high school, with about the same number of seats as our large high schools have continued to grow, that's something I've talked to these three guys about. But I think part of that, it can't just be looked at, how many seats do we have at the alternative high school, we have to look at MTSS systems inside the building, are there things that Tate's doing that we need to replicate on our home campuses? We've continued to do that and seen success with that. I would also be lying to you to say if we're going to consider 25 students and you're going to put them on the campus, and we have a full campus right now, is we see, you know, what are those things we're going to have to talk about with that? I think part of that has to do with the Tate design we're working through, you know, that we'll have to eventually talk to you about, about what does that look like for the new classrooms or new addition that, that Tate is getting? If we're going to serve some of those students at Tate Alternative High School, then what does that look like? And does that create some more opportunities for us to be able to do that based on the facility improvements they're going to have there? So it's hard to answer any of these questions in isolation, because there's so many factors of what we're doing.
It's a lot of dominos. And, and just for my own information, with the, with it being a regional alternative high school, what, what if any obligations do we have to create space for our partners?
So you guys are presented a MOU every, every year from me that talks about our agreement with that, it's the same students that are, or excuse me, the same school districts that access the Kirkwood Regional Center. And so we agreed to be the regional alternative high school, and if they can't program for their students, then they have the ability to request to have that student placed at Tate. That's not something where they can mandate that placement to happen at Tate, that's something we work in collaboration with them. So most, most often, we work with Clear Creek through that process, sometimes Solon, sometimes West Branch, if they have a student. But that's also a space available conversation, and we try to work through that. Most of the time, that's a very small number of students, it's not something that's impact our ability to be able to serve our own students in those, in the school district.
All right, thank you.
I think if it ever got to that point, we'd definitely look at that.
Okay.
So, more come?
Yep. Sorry, I don't think that was as short as we made it.
To the point, there's a lot of people that have to be concerned in that, so it's good to get to actually that.
Enough of that, yeah. So with this TREC program, obviously moving out, homeschool moving out, at what point will we need to have a discussion about what to do with that building slash?
Shortly thereafter, yep. So that was a conversation that we had back in 2011, so we will have to revisit that.
Okay. So, can I add? Um, now budget.
Make sure the board.
Mr. Wispert, today, you have good news.
You haven't spent the day with him, Brady.
They set supplemental state aid since we've been sitting in here, did I miss that? So this is essentially the same slide deck, the only thing that's different on here is the first page, all right? And I'm going to show it to you big like this, you got it, but then I'm going to zoom in so you can see it a little bit better. First thing I want you to see is down at the bottom, this number here, so that's the gap between where we need to be and where we are. So right now, we've identified a 1% supplemental state aid, I know the governor's told us 2.3. I've been to Des Moines, I've had the opportunity to talk to legislators locally, the big part of the problem is there is no way to pay for that, and mental health, and several of the other things that are in our state of state address. So there's some real concerns that we're going to be able to hit a mark above 1%. So when we built our budget, that's what we looked at, that gives us a deficit of $6.176 million. Now what if that came to be and 2.3% was passed, that would generate about an extra 1 and 1/4 million dollars to the budget. So you would reduce this deficit number by 1 and 1/4, so take it down to about 5. Okay, so 2.3% supplemental state aid does not solve our problem, it does help, but it does not solve the problem. So if you remember the last time we were together and we were talking about this and we looked at the slide deck?
Steve, a quick question?
Yes.
On that bottom, so we're assuming 1.1%, gets us at 83, so someone in the room with really good math, that what we have to have added on to that 1% to eliminate that 83, $83,000 difference?
Uh, well, if we get the. 31% is a million dollars supplemental state aid. Yeah, so they gave us 1.2, we'd be in good shape. So we would need 6% from the state to. Well, I think he just wanted to raise the 83.
Another 0.1 percent.
Yeah, another 10th, we'll do that. So since we were last with you, we shared several target areas for reduction, I'm going to bring you up to speed on that, and also give you a little bit of context, recognize this is still a work in progress, and we're going to continue to bring updates to you as we get closer to the certified budget. We are in the middle of the early retirement window right now, we extended it. It was due to close last Friday, we have extended it through February 14th. One of the issues that we had was we have a number of employees who qualify for an annuity in lieu of insurance. The state says that out of the management fund, you can pay a retirement incentive, but it must be a continuation of benefits. We had people who received the annuity who wanted to get into our health insurance plan as part of the retirement package, but we validated that they were unable to do so because that's not a continuation of benefit. There was some concern on their part about how that played into their annuity. We were able to make a determination that we can comply with the requirements of the management fund requirements of the state statutes and still offer them an incentive for their annuity, and so because we were able to open that up for them, we wanted to give them a couple extra weeks to consider that. I will tell you that one person yesterday at the listening post that I was at indicated that he'd already turned his retirement form in as a result of that. So right now, it says 34, if you would look to the right, you'll notice in that last bullet, there are additional seven special ed teachers who have taken early retirement. They are not included in that 41 because they're paid for out of categorical funding. But I'll give you the caveat, and you'll see this down below, where possible, we will be using all opportunities to move funds from the general fund into categorical funds so we can preserve teachers in the classroom. So it is within the realm of possibility that we have some teachers who have special ed certification, who are currently in general funded positions, who may be transferred into those open special ed positions, which would then create a space behind them in a generally funded position, which then could be considered as part of our budget reduction, so then we could recoup the savings for them. However, until we've done staffing, we don't know that yet. So we have 34 that are in the general fund that we know will be, will recover about $1.2 million towards our budget reduction as part of their retirement. The other seven we'll know as we get farther into staffing. We, another document that you have, which we're going to take a look at in a minute, is our weighted resource allocation model. One of the benefits of using the weighted resource allocation model at the elementary level is it's built on formulas. So we were able to take a look at the formula there and do some adjustments to it. By doing that, we're able to reduce 21 FTE at the elementary level. I think it's important to put that in perspective. If you look back in 2015, 16, we had approximately 431 teachers, 16, 17, we went up to 452, 17, 18, we went to 468. And just as a reminder, for those of you that weren't here with us, we phased into the RAM model, so that's part of that phasing process. So this year, we have 480 FTE at the elementary level. So a reduction of 21 takes us back to approximately 460. You can see that puts us kind of in between the 16, 17, 17, 18 staffing level. Not ideal, if you remember from our last conversation, I said that we're going to have to do less with less. So we are going to have fewer teachers, we will see a slight increase in our FTE at the elementary level, and I'll show you that when we get to the RAM model. Same thing at the secondary level, we've got a target there for potentially 21 FTE reduction. Again, looking 15, 16 to today, you see it go from 255 to 258 to 284 to 304. And so if we reduced it by 21, we'd be back to the 17, 18 staffing levels. Again, not ideal, as Paul alluded to earlier, part of our processes we move through registration, we'll be looking at those numbers, making some determination for faculty allocation at our seven secondary buildings. We have, in the next two categories, looked at categorical funding in the district. Two of the large areas of categorical funding that provides some flexibility for us are Title I and dropout prevention. In Title I, we've looked at our staff that are currently being deployed under those funds. One of the other alternative uses for Title I funding is class size reduction. One of the things that you need to have to use that money for class size reduction is a bona fide model that's based on a rationale which is very similar to our weighted resource allocation model. So that allows us to move staff into buildings that are covered under weighted resource allocation model. By doing that, we can move 8 FTE in there, which saves us about $700,000 on the, the general fund. That is not without consequences. One of the things that we're looking at is what happens with our reading instruction model at the elementary level. And Diane and Amy have spent a lot of time looking at how we reallocate resources in Title I, how to continue to meet the needs of our students, but recognize that we're going to have fewer resources for reading assistance at the elementary level than we do at this time. Dropout prevention is much the same way, there are lots of things that you can spend dropout prevention dollars on. One of the things that was changed at the state level a couple of years ago was the fact that you can use dropout dollars to help pay for school counselors. It's a percentage basis, based on the number of students that they work with, and so we've gone through that process and we're able to allocate approximately five FTE of counselors that can be paid for out of dropout prevention. And also some additional support staff, or additional staff that we can pay for out of dropout prevention. If you look on the right-hand side, one of the things though, that we are going to have to take a look at, and we do not have this fully determined yet, but areas that are likely to experience an impact from this reduction in available funds under dropout prevention include programs like, and these are examples, because we have not made the determination yet, IJAG, Workplace Learning Program, Student Family Advocates, Secondary Academic Support, Elementary Academic Support, Secondary Reading Teachers, Elementary Behavior Support, Secondary Behavior Supports, Credit Recovery Program. Those are all programs that are currently funded with FTE under dropout prevention, but obviously, as you can see from the, the numbers there, we can move approximately a million dollars from current general funded positions into dropout prevention, but then we're going to have to displace programs that are currently in there. So between those two programs, we can move about $1.7 million out of our general fund expenditure and into categorical funding, but we will be losing some programs as a result of that process. But again, based on the conversation we had last time, if the core work that we do is that dyad between the teacher and the student in the classroom, then the thing that we want to spend our greatest effort preserving is teachers in classrooms with kids. So none of these are good choices, but they do provide an opportunity for us to preserve our maximum FTE in classrooms.
Steve, what, what is the amount we, like, an annual amount we give for dropout prevention? If you're moving a million dollars from one to that, how much is still left over?
I have that available on the spreadsheet, I need to cloud it. Who is it?
Six, nine.
Yeah, it's a close to six, okay.
It's a pretty good chunk of it.
Yeah, and Title's 2.2, just to give you some perspective.
It's 2.4, but we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's mandated allocation in Title. A couple other things that we're looking at, our building, building budget supply, one of the things that we've done is we've tried to move some of the things that used to be under the building supply allocation to different budgets. So again, not ideal, but an opportunity for us. Third-party contractors, to date, we've already been able to reduce $136,000 for the contracts, we're still looking for more. These are contracts that have been paid for in the 18, 19 school year, we plan not to pay for in the 19, 20 school year, so we're still continuing to work with our team to identify all the current contracts that are out there, dollar values, expiration dates, which ones we can evaporate between now and the end of June. And then the last one on there is transportation, and I know that the Transportation Advisory Committee is meeting the 6th, is that right?
They got scheduled for the 6th.
But they'll meet before the next board meeting, so they can give an update at the board meeting. We've asked them to take a look at attendance support transportation routes. Just a reminder that busing is both a general fund and a PEPAL fund, and so the allocation, I know a lot of times people think about a bus costing 50,000 bucks, but part of that is allocated to the general fund, part of that's allocated to the PEPAL fund, the part that we count that's allocated to the general fund is $29,000. So right now, the general fund allocation for discretionary attendance support routes is $344,000. We set the goal for the advisory committee to look at a potential reduction in routes of up to four, which would save us $116,000. Yes, Phil?
Well, to that end, we just had a discussion where we have one school that may not open on time, and we, we may have two bus schedules into this mix as well. I, I, I know you're, you guys are looking at that, but there's probably, and I'm, I'm assuming you guys are going to have like, okay, this is, this is our optimistic what we can get out of it, and then this is the worst-case scenario if we have to, have to switch, have drastic changes halfway through the year.
Yeah, and actually, from where it stands right now, when we look at grant and we look at grant opening and remember who goes to grant, you would think about the Penn and the Garner Elementary students that are there right now. If we are to house those students where they currently live until they are able to move into their new house, obviously we're making some transportation route efficiencies at the beginning of the year before we break them up into three, but right now, as Craig's going through and going through the bidding process, we're operating under the assumption that grant does open, so that that way, if that comes to pass, we're prepared for it from a budget standpoint.
So, okay, we have reductions if it opens on time, is what you're saying?
Yes, we may. We've talked about that.
Great, okay.
Obviously, it's not optimal to do that, but there are certainly some opportunities that we have to save some money in the short term if the school isn't ready to go.
Right. And with this attendance support busing, is that that McKinsey-Vento?
No, that's the homeless busing, this is the busing that we provide for students. Remember that the Transportation Advisory Committee identified neighborhoods that absent busing might have attendance problems, and so we send buses into those neighborhoods, even though they're within the one to two mile radius.
Okay.
So if things came to pass today, if this was the budget that we presented to you today, we'd still be $8,3000 short of making our mark. And what we would like to do is, is first of all, make sure that we keep you up to speed on the discussions that we're having, because we don't want to bring you something that you look at and say, that's not palatable, we can't do that. And that's one of the main reasons that our attendance support busing is on here, because we know that the committee's going to talk about that, and then it's going to be back in front of the board. But we're close to making our mark, and we're hoping that A, supplemental state, state aid gets set here in the very near future, B, we get some of our staffing work done at the secondary level, C, working with Amy, we actually get all of our elementary attendance numbers in, which we will know by March 1st, they'll all turn their paperwork in, and we're going ahead of time on that, because then that gives us an idea of where we're at for staffing at the elementary level. So I'm going to stop here, I'm going to remind you that there are a whole list of things that were considered as we went through that brainstorming process of the administrative council. I just gave that to you.
Things that are additional considerations, things that are not baked into the plan.
They're not on here right now. Those are things that were raised as we sat together as a group of administrators, and I literally said to them, everything you can think of, put on this list.
So, one question I can ask, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, obviously, it's fairly ground when we're talking about this level of staff reduction. I think something you all, I'm sure, understand is, but we're still waiting to see what the registrations look like, and so we don't know what courses we're going to go and not go, but I'm just curious if we have a sense of impact to students in terms of course offerings or services or programs? or services or programs, and how those impacts play out proportionally across our student population. So I would hate for this to disproportionately affect our most vulnerable students. And I just, you know, dropout prevention, all those programs there, right, are for some of our most needy students. I'm sorry, that's not a regulation, but you know what I mean? So I would love to see, is there some way to view this across our demographics and student populations to see proportionally how they're impacted?
Well, I can tell you that the dropout prevention budget in and of itself, and the Title I budget in and of itself, as you look at them independently, are most likely to hit students who have needs that are currently served, that are in areas that, whether at the federal level or the state level, have been targeted for additional assistance. But the other thing that I would tell you is that, for instance, at the elementary level, if you look at the sheets that's up here right now, this is the sheet that Amy and I use as we go through staffing for the RAM process. And you can see that last year, we had a 20.9 overall average elementary class size. Next year would be 22.6, so we do see an increase there. But one of the things that we are able to do through this process is preserve RAM staffing. So we are still keeping class sizes in our neediest buildings at the smallest levels.
I mean, that's the kind of ones I want to be able to see on the impact.
And I'd argue the same thing at the secondary level. We could, alternatively, you could simply say, I'm unwilling to go through the sacrifice that would be required to cut the $1.7 million out of Title and dropout. And then what you would see, remember, 84% of our dollars goes to people. You'd see these numbers go up.
I totally get that.
So our conversation has been at the secondary level. Is it more important to preserve FTE that keeps classes available and class sizes smaller versus the dropout prevention? It's a horrible conversation to have, is the only way I can say.
I know, it's ground.
Yeah.
Try to do both to the least, you know, I mean, it's like the least worst decision, right? So if you dumped it all and, you know, secondary certified staffing reduction, well, all those numbers I presented to you today are just going to skyrocket, right?
So partially what you're saying, Amy, you've already kind of worked at this.
We're trying to do a balancing act. You've got to take some certified staff, we've got to keep some certified staff, got to take some dropout, got to keep some dropout. Same thing with Title. We're going to take some of it, but we're going to keep some of it. So we've made compromises in there. I mean, literally, when we first looked at it, we said, what if you just lob all of this off? And that's usually not a good scenario, because there's some things that come from dropout or come from Title that we want to keep in play. And so what we did was we said, okay, what do we have to keep in play? And then what does that give us in terms of available dollars that can be displaced? And then part of it, too, is keeping in mind that, you know, if we come around the corner, if staffing picks up, if we get some decent supplemental state aid in the next couple of years, if our growth gets back on track with where it was before, then how do we reintegrate these programs back into the work that we're doing in the district with the least disruption possible? So one of the concerns is if you reduce staff dramatically, either at the elementary or the secondary level, it's harder, whether it's at the secondary level, to build up content area and courses that are offered if you just immediately, if you just jettison those staff. At the elementary level, when you think about the logistics and the structure of the school, if you jettison a whole bunch of staff, it makes it harder to add that back in. So if we lose some of our dropout programs, and we lose some of our Title programs, and then over time, we're able to grow those back in, we also looked at that from a long-term perspective.
I was kind of thinking the same thing, Janice, as I was looking at the numbers at the bottom, like, here where we have 1%, we get lovely 2.3%. Here's where you add, and I think every 0.1% that you get above 1, that's 100 grand. And I would sit there and find the chunks of 100 grand that probably are going to disproportionately affect some of our students over the other, and be like, all right, that's the first one that we're not going to do.
Right.
We've got an extra 100 grand. Here's, you get another extra 100, great, we'll find another one. I'd like to say we take it all out, because magic's going to happen in Des Moines, but any little bit over that 1 million makes the conversation less and less ugly, but I don't think it's ever going to get.
Well, what we hope is that we come to you over the next few weeks, and you get new iterations of this chart, we'll know supplemental state aid. We'll have a better understanding of how our students are allocated at the elementary level, what our staffing truly looks like. We'll know what registration looks like at the secondary level.
Yeah, we'll start getting clear focus. So how do we make the decisions on the reductions? I mean, what sort of process is it based on enrollment courses, or, I mean, just, it's a whole question, but how do you guys go through this process?
Let me give you a question.
So which reduction, the cost reduction or the staff reduction? So there's a couple of different pieces, because, well, staff reduction, at the end of the day, is set up for us in state code and our collective bargaining agreement. And so it would be by seniority, if we get to that point where we actually have to riff staff. But short of that, we have to go through another whole kind of discussion in terms of placement, because we know there will be changes between buildings at the elementary level and at the secondary level. So then we have to look at certifications, but the agreement gives us a little more flexibility, and it's based on need of the building, where the staff member is, the need of the building, where the staff member would go, what the staff member's certifications are. And so there are a whole number of different factors that we have to consider, and so we have to look at both of those. And quite frankly, given the timing where we do this, and the principals don't want to hear this, but nobody does, we could potentially have to go through that process twice, because we're going to do a lot of our movement of staffing in March and try to get people slotted based on course enrollments and where we are. But if the RIF deadline isn't until the end of April, if we then have to actually lose teachers, we might have to reshuffle those decks again, because the people that are left might not line up with the certifications we actually had in early with spring. And so it's kind of this revolving.
That's why we're hoping things like an early retirement deadline, and hopefully setting supplemental state aid, the more of those pieces get locked in, then, as you said earlier, the clearer our picture gets. You know, one of the things that, and Chase has talked about, the people. If you think about it from a numbers perspective, you know, one of the things that we will have to do collectively as a team, Amy and I have already talked about this, you know, we've got aspirational goals that are set, where we know where they're at, we're going to talk about that when we get to the next board meeting under that weighted resource allocation model. But right now, we tend to use those as a pretty firm tip-over point. So if we're saying we're trying to keep a class under 30 kids, and we get the 31st kid in there, we've been pretty aggressive the last couple of years of saying, we're going to add another teacher to that grade level and make that a class of 15 and 16. That's going to be a little bit more sensitive this year for us, and we're going to have to look a lot closer at that 31st kid when there are 30 in there, because of the implication that that has for staffing. At the, you made the point a couple of times now, when we get those registration numbers in, you saw those long tails.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the secondary level, we're going to have to take a look at those. Are there classes that we might have to say, that's going to have to be offered every other year? I don't know yet. But those are the kinds of things that we'll have to take a look at as we get through registration. But we're hoping that what this does is it gives you a little bit better idea of the thinking that we're doing, that things are a little bit clearer as part of this process. One of the things that we ask of you is if you see a third rail in here, if you see something in here that you say, oh, my goodness, absolutely not. For instance, I showed you down here, these are the potential programs that could be affected under our dropout prevention program. So if there is something in there that's a dead stop for you as a board, that's something that we need to know about as we get further into the process, because that helps us make sure that what we bring to you is a set of budget reductions that meet your expectations and allow us, our building administrators, and eventually our teachers, to do their jobs.
Steve, can I say one thing on that? I think the one thing to pay attention to with some of those support programs would be, those would be people I think you hear from first, or complaints you hear, and those are the needy students that you talk about. But I think for us philosophically, the thing that Steve's brought to you a couple of times is what we have to do well first is core instruction. And so those things are going to seem, they're all intervention-based things, right? They're to help, and they're all good things we do, and they're not, there's no way we can't say those are not important or that they're not helpful, but the more that we don't do there, and if you ask us to shift things out, then we're reducing more core staff. And that's our core instruction. That's the thing we have to get right first, because if we downgrade our experience there, you might not hear from those things initially, but those are the things that have the long-term impacts that are harder to cover from, that he was just talking about.
So is there a role for the foundation here, clearly, not even like a $60,000 deficit, but from a program standpoint, the upper party could go raise money for, pick one of the programs that are in dropout prevention. They're not going to go fund staff.
Absolutely.
But they could fund programs.
The Workplace Learning Connections is a program that we brought into cooperation with Coursera Community Challenge. And something like that might be something that is appealing to the foundation.
Right, exactly. People will give you money.
Because it's the kind of ask that matches the types of things that they ask for.
Exactly, yes.
So, yeah, there are definitely things like that. Susan and I have had some tentative conversations about that. You know, obviously, her first question was, don't bring me things that are six-figure and seven-figure budget items, because those are things that are tough.
Definitely six-figure.
Tough for them to raise, but at the same time, yeah, she said that, again, the foundation has really moved from just asking for money to selling programs. We'd like you to sponsor School of the Wild, we'd like you to sponsor the visiting artist. And so some of the things here that fall in dropout prevention are those sponsor a program type of things, which are an easier lift for them when they reach out to the community.
Can I share? Nobody going to quit, though, to start a campaign in place by April?
Yep, we've talked about that.
Okay.
Can I share two things?
Yeah.
Like, was alluded to with the secondary folks, you know, we have certain courses for offer-and-teach purposes that we have to have on the books. The other thing I would say and piggyback off of what Matt said with dropout prevention is, just even in that shift of partial FTE of secondary counselors going in, not only do we have to offer-and-teach piece, but we also have to buy-by-allow code. So certain positions are required for school districts as well. The ratios are sometimes suggested, they're sometimes set forth for us, but that's something else that we're keeping in the backdrop as we do this work. And my one other thing that I just have to make sure that everybody understands is where Steve has published the RAM and the five levels, that's some of our first earliest enrollment polls with the new projections with kids in Power School all coded for the first time. So those are all live-in numbers. There's no kids that, we have not officially changed any indicators of kiddos that have met the exceptions for voluntary transfer yet. So those numbers will shift, for sure.
And as you look at the chart, one thing that I would also add to, as you look at it, you may say that it's interesting that it appears that kindergarten, first grade enrollment are the same with every school, and that's because we don't have kindergarten registration done yet, we don't have those numbers yet. So our basis for our estimation for our kindergarteners is the number of first graders that are in the live-in attendance area for that school. But if you go up to the top, and I encourage you to take a look at the right-hand side of that chart, because that's the summary page, you'll see there that the cohort that we've estimated for our current first graders at 1175 that we're using for our cohort for the kindergarteners is very similar to the cohort that you would see in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, et cetera. So it's right in line with those expectations. So again, this is where we are today, and we wanted to make sure that you were up to speed and knew that we were working hard to meet that mark of that budget that comes in, that's balanced, that meets the expectations that we have to comply with all the state budgeting rules. We're trying to make the least bad decisions we can out of the choices that are available to us, and we'd certainly welcome any input that you have as you think about it. We'll be back in front of you every couple of weeks, just giving you an update on this. And if you've got thinking on that, that you want us to make sure that we include as part of this process, we'd definitely welcome that.
Can I just clarify one thing on the timeline? Well, one other point, too, and I mentioned it when I was talking about the reductions in force, and obviously, we can't control what the state does. The governor can say what she wants to give, but then obviously, you know, the legislature has to fight it out and have to approve the budget. We don't have the luxury, given our current circumstance, to wait for that to happen. We have a hard deadline from the state of April 30th where we have to notify teachers if we're going to have a reduction in force. So we kind of have to work back from there and thinking, when we come back from spring break, we're going to have to start having those difficult conversations about, hey, look, we're looking at maybe a true reduction. Brady's been great in the association with helping us try to get as much information collected as possible. And one of the new things we did was we sent out what we call the teacher intention form and asked teachers to tell us what their plans were for next year. It's the first time we did it, but actually, we got a really good response. We have over 1,000 responses of our 1,143 teachers. That's the good news, which means they're telling us, they're willing to share that information.
Would you leave with, that's the good news?
I know. The bad news is only 41 have told us that they're not planning on returning to the district next year. 41's a familiar number, because that's the exact number of retirements that we've got. Now, I know it's not.
Yeah, they're right.
Now, I know that's not exactly accurate. Like, Scott sent me an email today about a teacher that he knew was, their family was going to make a move and move out of the district. So we know there's a couple. But even with those, the difference between the numbers of the retirements and then what Steve has shown you on the sheet and what we've calculated in my office is still 38. Right, so we have to look and try to work.
How many teachers again?
I'm sorry?
What's the total number of teachers in? 1,100?
1,143, yeah. You know, based on what Steve showed on that sheet, starting with that 42 number, after the 41 or the 34 that are taking retirement, we know of three or four more resignations. So that's still a 38-person gap between the number that we want to get to and where we are currently, knowing through attrition, and that's what we're going to want to do, right? Is hopefully we do this through attrition, that no one has to lose their job, that everybody wants to be included or put in the school district this spring.
But even that has to factor in, who's required to teach what? Doesn't that mean?
It does.
It does.
And like I said, I included the seven special ed staff openings that are there. I did factor them in from a budget standpoint. Brady will remember this, because he was part of it. The last time we went through this process, we did some involuntary transfers out of currently taught subject area into certified taught, or certified viable subject areas. So we did some involuntary transfers of people with the theory that we're going to move you from a position teaching X to a position teaching Y, because you're certified to do that, because there is enough transitionary turnover in the district, that we'd rather keep you on the team in a different position, so that when the position in your field opens up again, we can move you back in there, because you have the least seniority in that certification area. So that's still an option for us. We'll continue to keep that, keep working on that, because one of the things that that does, to Chase's point, is if possible, we prefer not to have to go through a reduction in force to actual people.
And my real point of bringing that up was to try to point out urgency from a timeline situation, that, you know, when we come back from spring break, we'll really sit down and probably have that first conversation with our first and second-year teachers if this situation doesn't improve, and say, by the way, you may be getting a notice from us in the next three weeks that you will not have a job in the district. And spring break's not that far away, and it's eight weeks. And so I think that just talks to where we are. And we want to be as transparent as we can with our employees. We don't want to overly worry them, but I think it'd be, it wouldn't be very creative either to pretend that we're not concerned about this.
And one bit of good news, those of you who've been around Block, you know that the state has not always been really good about setting supplemental state aid. They have been much more adamant about their intent to do so early in the process. They've already taken up a couple of education bills. They took up the personal finance bill through the House that would exempt students prior to the graduating class of 22, 23. That would help. And so that's off to the Senate right now. So I'm hopeful that with the governor's focus on education in her State of the State speech, that they actually take up supplemental state aid and get that done sooner rather than later. They've got other things that they want to move on.
They're supposed to do it the first 30 days.
Yeah, I think save is supposed to be a part of that process. Now, but remember, that's not a binding requirement, Brady, that is a recommendation.
Laws are suggestions.
He has the expertise as well. Thank you.
So I'm hopeful that some of those things that are K-12 focused are actually done soon in the session, and then that really helps us firm up our picture.
Yeah, Chase came to the Building Row Council meeting, did a fantastic job, just talking through all of this. I think communication is just going to be, you know, critical. And I would say on behalf of, you know, the administrative community, you know, Matt, Amy, and Craig, Steve, and Chase have been working a butt-off at the central office on all of these things. Just having known factors established is really important, because there are a lot of things that we don't know. How many students are going to, in advance, will take advantage of the voluntary transfer? So that March verse is, that's really, really tricky. So as a board, I would just say, you know, making, you know, having conversations, making decisions, and saying, this is what we're going to go with, because then we know those variables will really help these guys out. Otherwise, all of a sudden, you keep having all these moving targets, and it just is really, it's really, really hard to do.
I would just say, there was a time when Carson forces were common and predictable. It was just the way it was operating procedure. And that's not been the case for so long. So it's the work that they're doing is really key here because it just hasn't been part of anybody's recent memory.
Yeah.
How many of those things have you had with?
Before I've been here.
Yeah.
I know, I went through a process that Greg's talking about. It was just the way we did things in the 90s in Wisconsin in the early aughts. It just happened every year. You were a new teacher, you expected to get a pink slip. It's just kind of the way things worked. But that's not, and so to Greg's point, that there will be a lot of angst in general from that process.
Oh, gosh, yeah. Crazy.
Right. And there was a big focus last year to hire zero in first-year teachers. I mean, just an absolute locked-in vision for that.
Yeah. I remember how great the opening session was. It was pouring down rain and everything was all happy and great and, yeah, it's grim.
Well, I think that's got to your point and we're kind of off topic, but ramifications from a budget situation this year go into the next couple of years. Not only from a money standpoint, but also from a climate and culture standpoint and attracting talent. And this idea that we're trying to expand how we recruit, who we recruit, people don't want to go places where they think they're going to lose their job. And so that's one of the reasons we're really trying to be transparent and engage employees because even though we're facing this, we're truly trying to ramp up engagement so people feel that they're valued so that when we can start hiring again, we haven't taken too many steps backwards. I mean, I had conversations with Greg and a couple others about great student teachers they have, student teachers of color that are in the district that if we can find a way to get them here, we want to do that, but it's going to be a challenge.
So to that point, having a very incredible story on how we got to this budget shortfall, that it's just like, oh, we don't know, or, I mean, it's the readily, I'm sorry, enrollment projections are the big factor. So how did we miss so badly? What happened? What were the trends? Can we continue, that we expected them to continue or there was a one-off and here's why we believe that? I mean, having an incredible story around that, I think is going to be important.
Our biggest challenge, in all honesty, and I know I've shared this with our legislators over and over again, and, you know, in nine years, we've had one year of adequate dropout growth, one year. Every other year, there's been a structural deficit. So every time there's a structural deficit, and we're really good in public education. First of all, no one wants to go out and tell students or parents, "Hey, guess what? Things aren't going to be as good for you next year as they were this year." So we do a really good job of making the story as rosy as possible. And we've done that year over year over year, but at the same time, in the back room when the door closes, we're short a couple million bucks. So we figure out a way.
So we'll tend to find it, so maybe disappointed we've reached the end of our.
We squeeze so hard because you never want to go out and say, "Hey, guess what? We can't do, we can't give you as good as what your brother had or your sister had or your cousin had or your parents had when they were a student here." It's not our DNA.
But I still think crafting that message so it doesn't sound offensive, so it does, so it sounds like we know what we're doing and we know what to expect going forward and here's why, to get the confidence in the team so that they, we don't see a flight.
Yeah.
And we did know some of that, right? The way we do our year's with Liberty Open, right? I mean, we knew that knowing the extent of it with not as many kids coming in as we thought that.
Some inefficiencies.
Added to it, most of it, right? So, I mean, it came up at the legislative forum, we were talking about the need for money and I think Senator Bulka asked, "So how do you get to the point where you have a $6 million deficit that you've got to deal with?" It was, I don't think it was, but it kind of came out accusatory a little bit. And Steve fired right back, "Well, nice three years of insufficient supplemental state aid."
I was hoping it was a sense question, otherwise my answer wasn't very nice.
Because we cut everything because of that persistent lack of funding. We squeezed, optimized, and we can't do that anymore.
Right.
I would say if you haven't made structural changes, you know, we're trying to run the same thing we tried to run.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, there's not been a structural change. And to complement the nine years of, and it's going to check to us.
Yeah, yeah. I think somewhere in there that's.
Those are radical changes and they're very, very hard.
And you know what? One of the things that we can look to, and I hope you move us to do that over time depending on what happens, is we are one of the few districts in the state that's growing. Most districts are declining and even most large urban districts, Cedar Rapids lost 200 kids this year. And so when you look at the large districts that are declining or you look at the other districts across the state that are declining, you see those radical changes. Four-day school weeks, elimination of entire departments at the secondary level, enormous class sizes at the elementary level, things like that. Those are things we haven't had to deal with, but it, to your point though, it would be in our interest to reach out and better understand what misery they've lived through so that we can understand what we may have to and what we may have to. I'm cautiously optimistic that we're going to swing through this. Our moron's going to come back, we're going to get some decent supplemental state aid and we will be back to where we were a couple of years ago in a couple of years. It's how we weather that storm.
That's right.
Keep our staff, keep our morale, keep our head up, keep our programs. And put us in a position that when the money comes back, that we can add to things back that we've lost.
In terms of Brand and Hoover, have you guys started hiring for that? And if so, is it only internal?
Right now, we have our inquiries on, so all hiring that's going on is internal. So all the postings that go up, it's moving people around. So at Hoover, we had an arrangement with the ICEA, the people at old Hoover that wanted to transfer to new Hoover could, so we've extended that to them. There were a couple of additional openings at the school, posted them internally. Those are internal movements from one school to another. Doing the same thing with Brand right now, one school to another. And if you see any openings that are out there right now that are posted in the district, admin to custodian, right now, everything is internal only. And what we're doing then is looking to fill the most key positions and then leave the vacancies at the end of that string of dominos, recognizing that those are the positions that we'll fill as things come back.
The only caveat is that in a week, you'll start seeing some external pop-up just so we can maintain compliance with the IDE.
Yes.
And Steve did give us, give me that directive.
Special ed has some requirements for us to fill positions and we can't, if someone doesn't apply internally, I can't leave them vacant. So we can post them internally, but if we don't get internal applicants, we've got to post externally to comply with IDE.
But only on the support side, no teachers, just on the parent support side to get us through the, get us through the year.
Is there still expected a little bit of staff movement from West Liberty with next year having a full senior class?
I think.